Good evening. This is the Design Review Commission meeting for San Gabriel, Monday, September 25th. It is now 6:34, and I'm calling the meeting to order. With that, we're going to, the first item is our Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Chair Salo, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Salo. Will you please do the roll call?
Chair Romo?
Here.
Vice Chair Salo?
Here.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng? And Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. We have a public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Persuaded to the Brown Act, the Design Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear on an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Design Commission, please fill out a card, a speaker card that is available at the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to our recording secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Chair, not at the time.
Thank you. Next item, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the Design Commission or public requests separate discussion. Commissioner, Vice Chair Salo?
No comments.
Commissioner Tu?
No, no comments, thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
No, no comment.
Commissioner Lopez?
No comments, thank you.
I actually have one very small correction in the minutes. Vice Chair Salo, you're in the first, under the Pledge of Allegiance, it says Commissioner Salo. I would like to have that represented as Vice Chair. And just a simple little typo there, but I'd like to make, have that corrected. I'm sure that's not an issue. So with that, I guess there's a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment as proposed for your title.
Thank you very much, I second the motion.
Okay. So I made the first motion. Vice Chair Salo seconded the motion, and with that, will you do roll call?
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
The vote is five ayes in approval, motion passed.
Thank you very much. Next item is public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for participating and tuning into tonight's Design Review Commission meeting. My name is Samantha Tiwassar, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. There are four public hearing items this evening, and copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. And on the table that is by the entrance. And again, if you wish to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary, which is Beverly this evening. And speaker cards are also available on the back table. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers will be called up one by one to the podium during the public hearing portion of each item, and each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Any decision made this evening by the Design Review Commission is appealable to the city council, and the deadline for filing an appeal application concerning a decision is Monday, October 9th. Otherwise, any decision made this evening is effective on October 10th. And if you wish to appeal an application, please contact the project planner for the application and fees. And for each item this evening, staff will provide a brief summary of the staff report, followed by a presentation from the applicant, if there is one, and then the public hearing portion will be open. And after the public comments, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose. And prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask questions of the applicant's staff or the city architect. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And so with that, staff is ready to provide a summary of item A.
Thank you very much. Item A, 522 Dewey Avenue, planning case number SPR 23-024. Site plan review, applicant Yu Hing. Presentation will be made by Associate Planner Marlon Cervantes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Design Review Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a site plan review to allow for the construction of a second story in addition to an existing single-family home located at 522 Dewey Avenue, planning case number SPR 23-024. The remote's not working, I think I might have to ask you to switch the slides. Catch. The subject property, yeah, the subject property measures 7,000 square feet and is currently developed with a 1,673-square-foot, single-story, single-family home. The property is located on the south side of Dewey Avenue, directly across from Dewey Avenue Elementary School, between Walnut Street to the west and California Street to the east. The project is Zone R1 for single-family residences and has a single-family homes directly to the southwest and east of the subject property. A second-story addition was previously approved at this location at the May 23rd, 2022 Design Review Commission hearing meeting. However, the applicant has withdrawn that application and filed the current application proposing a redesign of the home. The project before you tonight proposes to maintain the style of the existing home and add a second story measuring 645 square feet. A rear portion of the home measuring 744 square feet is proposed for demolition, including an unpermitted addition which measures 327 square feet. The demolished area will be replaced by an accessory dwelling unit measuring 800 square feet. The existing residence was constructed in 1948 and does not appear eligible for individual designation or inclusion as a contributor in a historic district. The city architect has verified that the existing single-family residence is not a historic resource and unlikely to be eligible for designation. The single-family home with the proposed addition will measure 1,845 square feet, 1,200 square feet on the ground floor, and 645 square feet on the second floor. The proposed addition is consistent with the development standards set forth in the municipal code for the R1 zone, including building height, second-story setbacks, lot coverage, and floor area ratio. The existing side yard setbacks, as well as the rear yard setback at the attached three-car garage, are inconsistent with the current setback requirements in the R1 zone. Permit records indicate that the remaining portion of the home and the three-car garage were constructed legally, and no changes proposed to the side and rear yard setbacks. Additionally, the FAR and lot coverage calculations shown on this table do not include the 800-square-foot ADU as Section 153.047D of the municipal code states that only the area in excess of 800 square feet, excuse me, in excess of the 800-square-foot threshold shall be counted. The architectural design of the home was reviewed by city staff and the city architect for consistency with the design guidelines for single-family residences. The home exhibits features of a mid-century modern home, including canted fin walls, punctured fin walls at the entry of the home, and a shallow-pitched shed roof. The proposed addition maintains consistency with the existing home through its use of the canted fin walls, eaves extending over the windows, and a shallow-pitched gable roof with a slope consistent with the existing first story. The project proposes to landscape a majority of the front yard, including the addition of a new lawn area directly adjacent to the existing walkway leading to the primary entrance of the home. The existing landscape area on the opposite side of the walkway will maintain the existing trees and ground cover and will be replaced with new organic mulch. The perimeter of this area, as well as the planter directly in front of the home, will also feature new 1-gallon blue fescue shrubs. Along the western property line, the applicant proposes to plant new 15-gallon silverberry shrubs and bark mulch ground cover. The rear yard portion of the property will replace the existing hardscape with a new lawn, two gravel paths, and new 36-inch box Saratoga Bay laurel tree, and a planter along the perimeter with a 15-gallon foxtail agave plants. Additionally, the existing concrete driveway directly facing the garage will be replaced with interlocking permeable pavers to reduce runoff. Section 153.353 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code requires the submittal of a neighborhood analysis of homes within 300 square foot, excuse me, 300-foot radius around the project site. The analysis shall identify one and two-story homes in the neighborhood. As can be seen here, there are three properties with two-story homes within a 300-foot radius and two additional homes located on the same block. The proposed project was also reviewed for consistency with the city's general plan. The general plan land use designation for the subject property is low-density residential. The general plan defines this designation as primarily single-family homes on a single parcel. The proposed project is for the construction of a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence and is consistent with the general plan land use designation. The project also meets community design goal 10.3 to create designs that live and breathe the San Gabriel's neighborhoods as they themselves live and breathe. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exact per guideline, Section 150, excuse me, 15303, Class 3 for new construction. On September 14th of 2023, a notice regarding the project was sent to properties within a 300-foot radius of the project site. A notice was also posted on the project site. Tonight's meeting agenda was posted at City Hall, the local post office, the public library, and was advertised on September 14th, 2023, edition of the San Gabriel Sun. Staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel approving planning case number SPR 23-024 for a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence at 522 Dewey Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Will you be asked, the commissioners, if they have any final questions?
Yes, I have a question for staff, is that the project has been approved previously. Was it major changes made after that?
I don't have specific details, I don't have the original plans in front of me, but there are significant enough details that it was, proposes a new application as opposed to a revision to an existing approved. I believe it's a different architect as well.
Thank you. So, the first time I reviewed this, if you recall, I said at the first DRC that it looked like the front of the house was a dog and the back of the house was a cat. And then I asked them to kind of redesign it to be more consistent overall, which they did, and then it came to be reviewed and approved. Subsequent to that, they changed architects, and, well, one of the issues in the first version was the very awkward, very skinny bedrooms on the second floor that we were all talking about. So, new architect comes along, fixes that problem, but returns to the cat in front, dog in back. So I asked them to kind of redo it together. So that's what we're seeing now. It's very similar to the original version, but better arrangement of rooms. So it's mostly internal improvements.
Thank you. Yeah, that I recall, there was like an awkward layout on the second floor. Thank you. I don't have other questions, thank you.
Quick question for staff. The, is the ADU part of the purview of this commission or not part of the commission?
It's not, no.
It's not?
No.
So we really should just look at the addition portion?
Correct.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
No questions for staff.
I just have one question. I noticed that you have the narrative of the trees on site, and that you're planning on doing, but I didn't see the legend in the plans that were submitted. Did I miss something?
There is a landscape plan, or landscape information on the site plan. There isn't a legend, but each of the plants is identified with callouts on the, on the site plan. There's no, there isn't a legend, but each of the plants and planting materials is identified with callouts directly on the plan. That's Sheet A 2.1.
And with this project, it seems they're not providing any street trees, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the existing trees are going to remain?
The existing trees in the front yard are remaining, yes.
And in the rear?
In the rear yard as well, with one new tree in the rear yard as well.
No further questions?
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to go forward and address his question?
Hi, I'm the designer, Yu Hing.
Do you have anything to add that you want to share with the commission?
No, just like to let you know, we completely improved the, the design of this addition to have much better, nice interior room layouts. And with the opportunity, also have the ADU downstairs, which is a big improvement for the client also.
I will go to the commissioners to see if they have any questions for you.
Okay.
So, any clarifying questions for the applicant? Commissioner Tu?
No, I don't have questions.
Commissioner Cheng?
One quick question. Your plan called for matching the asphalt shingle roof to the existing.
Yes.
Have you looked into it, and can you match them?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty common roof. They should be easy to match.
I just want to make sure that it's on the plan and the planning department will basically hold you to do your best to match the existing.
Yeah, for sure, I'm sure the inspector will tell us to complete the measure.
You know, the, the existing roof is some time ago and...
But, but they're not, they're not a special type, they're just a compound.
I guess, I guess it's important that you make every effort to match it.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Commissioner Cheng mentioned, was that, you know, because the massing of this project, it's all disconnected forms, it's really critical that all of the different masses in front and behind, that the paint color all matches.
Right, it might be a chance we will reprint the front house too, if, yeah.
Yeah, it's very clever that you, that you painted the whole house white and it kind of masked the fact that you have all these different volumes kind of projecting in and out. But what Commissioner had mentioned was that, you know, the original roof is, you know, 10, 15, we don't know how old that is, and so it's weathered over time. And so it's possible that if you use the exact same product on the new addition, it's going to look slightly different. And so if it looks different enough, I think the applicant...
Yeah, we will have to change the whole roof with that.
Yeah, yeah, you should be open to it.
Yeah.
If there's a stark enough contrast between the new and the old due to the weathering over time.
Those are my only comments, thank you. Okay.
I, I'd like to mention one thing. In San Gabriel, there are details on houses that give it character.
And with your redesign, you are keeping that front porch
with kind of the modern-style entry and repeating those lines. And I think when we have historic homes, even though they're not deemed historic...
I also need to thanks to Ron.
Yeah, and they have to remain as such. Those types of elements add character that you're not going to see in other places, so I think...
Oh, this house too is kind of special on the street.
For having, for leaving that and having the lines in the back kind of mimic a little of what you see in front of the house.
Right.
Thank you, thank you for working with your architect and getting this to us. With that, it is now time for public comment on this. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak? I see none. It is now 6:55, and the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Staff, do you have any additional comments on this?
We haven't received any additional comments, no.
All right, great. So, at this time, it's time for deliberation. So, one of the comments that I heard you commissioners talk about is the roof material for the existing roof, and the importance of not necessarily matching, but re-roofing the original structure. So, I'd like to see if maybe we can get a motion or have any additional discussion regarding the design. Commissioner Tu, or we can go down the line?
I, I think I agree with city architect that the design has been improved. I recall the previous render, it actually has a flat roof in the back. It's like what you said, there's like a cat and dog. Now we have some sort of dialogue in between the existing house, the front of the house and the addition in the back. I think that's definitely a, a big improvement. And also the layout works much better. That was one of the major concern we had the last meeting, that a lot of the rooms are really not functional. I think the, the designer had done a good job to improve the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cheng?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think overall, the project looks cohesive enough that looks like it's a development at the same time, rather than a, a take out the back and just add something in the middle. I think the designer had put enough thought into making it comprehensive as a whole building. So, so that's why I don't want to see, part of the, the new roof is so different from the existing. Part of the window is completely different from the existing. So, I would, I would definitely say that the roofing should match enough to make it look like it's a whole building. And if, for any reason, they cannot find the same roof material and the same color, I would make a condition that the, the whole project should be re-roofed with the same roof material. That would be one of my added conditions. With that, I can stop moving.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
No comments, but I do concur on the roofing.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, I recall approving this previously, very similar comments, like the fact that they built upon the original home and the style of the home instead of trying to reskin it in like Tuscan or whatever is the trend of the month. So I really appreciate that.
I have no additional comments, so at this point, is there a motion?
Let me go ahead and give it a try. I move to adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of City of San Gabriel, California, approving a plan case number SPR 23-024 for a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence at 522 Dewey Avenue, subject to the recommended condition of approval, with one additional condition, that if the applicant cannot find a matching roof material, then they would have to re-roof the entire project with the, with the same material and color.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, oh.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Salo?
I second the motion.
Great. So at this point, we can have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Tu? Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on to item B, which is 1105 Alhambra Road, planning case number SPR 22-011. Site plan review, applicant Leo Chwang. And Samantha, you are going to make a conclusion on this.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, before we start, Commissioner Lopez is located within the radius of the project site. So we would ask that Commissioner Lopez excuse himself to the side room.
I will excuse myself.
And then we will get him after the item is discussed.
Thank you.
Yes, as mentioned, the project site is at 1105 Alhambra Road, Unit B, and this is SPR 22-011. The subject property is located on the west side of Alhambra Road, which is a private road that runs along the Alhambra Wash. The subject property is 7,625 square foot in size and is currently developed with a one-story, approximately 1,100-square-foot, single-family home with an attached garage at the rear of the property. This is a photo of the existing property, and to the north, south, east, and west are other existing single-family homes. And southwest to the subject property, again, is the Alhambra Wash. The subject property is Zone R1 single-family and is designated low-density residential in the general plan. And as shown on the slide, the property is surrounded by single-family properties. The proposed project is an addition to the front of the house, approximately 600 square feet, and also a new second story, which is approximately 400 square feet, as well as demolishing the existing attached two-car garage at the rear and relocating it to the front of the property. And it will also be a two-car garage attached at the front. The slide right here shows a perspective of the addition. Unlike the application before, this is an architectural style change to the property. Currently, it is a traditional-style home, and the proposal is to change it to a Spanish style, as shown on the slide. And also, it was a little bit difficult, according to the project architect, to provide that perspective because the angling of the private road is challenging to get an angle view of the property. So this is the color elevation... So this is the color elevation that's provided by the project architect. The development standard table here shows that the proposed project complies with the zoning code. The proposed lot coverage percentage, floor area ratio percentage, height are less than the maximums allowed, and the proposed setbacks are greater than the minimums required. Similar to the first project, a neighborhood analysis was provided within the three-hundred-foot radius, and five properties existing have two stories, three being on the same road, on Alhambra Road, and two on Mills Creek, which is just north of the subject site. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan. This is a low-density residential area, complies with the housing goal A, as well as community design goals ten-point-one, as well as ten-point-three. And this project was reviewed per CEQA guidelines and is categorically exempt per Class Three for new construction of small structures. The project was noticed, mailed to property owners and occupants within a three-hundred-foot radius, as well as posted at the subject property. And the agenda was posted at City Hall, the Post Office Library, the city's website, as well as published in the San Gabriel Sun. So the recommendation before the Design Review Commission this evening is to adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number SPR twenty-two-dash-zero-one-one for a new second-story, or two-story addition to an existing single-family residence at one-one-zero-five Alhambra Road, Unit B, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you. At this time, maybe if we can start with our architect before we go to the commissioners.
I did, sorry, I did review this a couple of times. I think that the presence, the project was well-presented, had a few comments that they responded to well. Even though it's a two-story addition, the second story is quite set back from the front of the house so that it maintains a one-story character along the street, and I think they've done a good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, do you have any clarifying questions for Steph?
Yes, I do. The R-one stand, the side set at six feet, but our proposed project has four feet nine?
Yes, so the side setback requirements are a total of twelve with a minimum of six, and if there is an existing side yard setback, this is per the zoning code, that is less than that, the code allows for the continuance of the existing setback, to provide for a consistent look. So for the addition to not stand out as an addition, but as a continuance of the existing setback.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
No, I'm fine. I don't have any questions for Steph.
Vice Chair Salo?
No additional comment. I had the same question regarding the setback.
I have no additional questions for Steph. So the applicants on this project, the applicants here?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything to the presentation tonight?
Leo, the applicant for the project. I think Samantha did a pretty good job explaining the project. Regarding the side yard setback, one of our primary reasons for maintaining that existing four-foot or so setback was so that the overall width of the house wouldn't look even larger than it is. So by maintaining that setback and providing a larger setback on the opposite side of the property, the overall width of the house reads a little smaller.
Great, thank you. We'll go around?
No problem.
Clarifying questions for you?
Of course.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes, I do have, because the side print of the drawing, it doesn't show clearly what is the relationship between the, from the property to the, to the public right of way?
Yes.
Because the front setback is thirty-eight feet four, but it's a blank space as a private street, and there's no graphic on it. So I'm just a bit confused on that.
Right, so the actual property includes the dedication for the private street, so the property line actually ends where the wash begins. So from that distance, there's a setback of about thirty-eight or so feet. We do have another dimension on there that measures the front of the residence to where the private street ends, and that's about twenty-one feet. Let's see here. Yeah, the private street's pretty narrow, which comes back to the perspective, it's a little difficult unless we send a drone out into the wash, it's pretty difficult to get a street view of the, a photo of the neighbors plus the subject property.
Okay, I see. So the front setback, twenty to thirty-five feet is actually to the property line, not to the...
Yeah, the thirty, yeah, the thirty, the thirty-eight-foot setback is to the property line, and then the twenty-one foot is the setback to the private street.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yeah, just one quick question on your, the details of your window jam detail and your door jam detail. I guess on sheet eight-point-one, detail two, you called out to be a decorative stucco foam that you are applying. On your sheet eight-point-two, I think a detail to be stone work. Do you, have you decided what you want to use for all these decorative pieces, foam or stonework?
So the portions that are street-facing, so primarily the precast concrete would be for the main entry surround. On the front elevation, we have the front door, which is recessed back a little further, and then on the edge of that recess, we're going to have some precast concrete detailing. For the windows themselves, we most likely stick with foam trimming.
You use that foam trim?
For the windows, yes.
The windows seal and jam and all of that?
Correct, yes. And then for the, but the parts that face the street that are on, you know, closer to where people would access, those parts would use precast, so primarily around the main entry area.
Okay, all right. So I just want to clarify, because it didn't clearly identify which detail is for what area.
Right, yeah. That's a good question.
All right, fine, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
No questions, but I do have a comment. You know, this style of architecture, what sometimes becomes, you know, a deal-breaker, and I've mentioned this consistently in the past, is it's always the ornamental iron work. Oftentimes, when it's, you know, very plain or it looks like security bars, it doesn't fit the character of the home. It looks like this proposal seems to understand that. I looked at the detail sheet, it appears to be ornamental, the wall sconces as well. So I hope that that treatment will be considered to the very end of the project, because oftentimes I see that, you know, it's very late in the game, you're way over budget, and, you know, this stuff comes, kind of comes in at the very end of the project, and, you know, it's an easy item to...
Right. Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the owner's wife will let, let the owner get away with not having that detailing. She's a pretty...
Yeah, so I just wanted to be sure that the ornamental iron work makes it in the project all the way to the end. That's my only comment, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to compliment some of the materials that are upscale, like the copper gutters versus aluminum gutters that are copper toned, you know?
Right.
There is a difference longevity on those materials. I do think, you know, having the rounded door and the window on the door makes it a little bit more permeable, and you have the windows on the second floor. Even though you have a garage on the street face, kind of there before, it's part of the neighborhood, that's something that I usually don't prefer, but I understand why it's here. You do have one-story houses on both sides of this property, and there are two uncovered balconies that are proposed. That might create a privacy issue for your neighbors.
Right.
And wanted to know if you thought about any screening?
We did, but we also looked at the setbacks and realized we're pretty close to thirteen, fourteen feet away from the property lines, that it would be, we thought it would be acceptable because we kept, we didn't provide any of the balconies on the opposite side, the more narrow side of the property. And also, like, on the side, that side yard, the plan is to vegetate that a little more. We are calling out for some additional trees and hedges along that edge. So ideally, that would serve as the screening between properties.
But even if you put trees there, if you plant something, you're probably going to get something maybe six feet tall right now, and it'll take years for that to grow and mature. So I want to maybe ask you, Ron, if you have any thoughts about something that would be, you know, with the, with the site, but provide some type of screening for their neighbors? Because if you have a two-story home, and you have a one-story home next door, if it's just a window, then the view is limited, but having two open balconies, that might create an issue that might become problematic. And I, I don't want to be super picky, but being a good neighbor means having, giving respect, and if we can solve something now versus having your neighbors hate you, that would be good.
Right.
That would be good. And I, I, Ron, do you have any thoughts?
Well, the front balcony is very small. It's not like you're going to party on the front balcony. The rear balcony is a very large balcony, so I can see more activity on the rear. But I don't have any direct thoughts, because if they were to build like a screen wall or something, it probably will violate the diagonal height limit.
I mean, in addition, but in addition to possibly, you know, pushing past the encroachment plane, the main thing is that if we had any form of wall or kind of like fence there, it'd be very, very visible from the street because of that edge that's in line with, oh, well, it's, it's still inset in a little more from the further, further side, but if you look on the elevation there where you kind of see the edge of that railing, if you imagine that railing there were six feet tall or five feet tall as a screen, screening measure, then it would be pretty visible from the street and probably wouldn't look very good.
One idea could be that the railing on the neighbor's side maybe becomes a solid stucco railing instead of an ornamental iron railing that would at least limit a little bit of view through.
Yeah, I mean, could you green, could we have like green pine material?
Oh, yeah.
If all on the, on the balconies, the applicant gives two, half if they want them, you know, we could have something.
Oh, sure, sure.
Because I, I, I do think, I know, but it's like to have a balcony, you know, looking at my house in my backyard and it would just be a awkward situation.
Well, I think maybe a combination of a solid rail, solid stucco rail, which is a continuation of the stucco wall, and then to have espaliered plants along that whole wall would soften the appearance of the wall. Maybe a combination.
Yeah, I mean, if it helps, we could, instead of iron work along the rear balcony, we can have all of that as a low wall as well. If that helps, we could do that. That wouldn't be an issue with the owners.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've gone through clarifying questions to the applicant, so at this time, it is time for public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
No, Madam Chair, we did receive one public comment via online. It is, it is from a local resident, Devin Wang. Dear Design Review Commission, I live directly, directly behind the subject address. I am tremendously concerned about the privacy of my residents as they have a very shallow backyard. Having worked extremely hard my entire life to finally be blessed enough to own a home in a secluded cul-de-sac so that I may enjoy a peaceful, quiet, and private neighborhood that thought of my neighbor adding a second story that overlooks my backyard and home is very disheartening. The second-story addition will essentially take away one of the most valued rights of a homeowner. In this case, to grant the privilege, two-one is to forego the privacy rights of those surrounding neighbors. I sincerely hope that you will agree that a privilege should not outweigh a right. Please do not allow the second-story addition. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Devin V. Wang. No addition, come.
Now it is seven nineteen, and the time for public comment on this item is now closed. You can sit down?
No.
Thank you. Steph, do you have any additional comments?
No other comments.
So, well, it's time for us to deliberate and discuss this project. Commissioner Chu?
Yes, I have a couple comments on the project. First of all, we know that it's a Spanish-style home, and the applicant actually put a courtyard in front, but it seems like the courtyard design is a little bit forced. It's the, it makes the living room very small and cuts into the main house. I wasn't sure about the purpose of the, the whole courtyard, because, I mean, if it's a Spanish courtyard, I completely understand, but it seems like the courtyard doesn't incorporate with the, the Spanish style. It's really like just cut out a part of the house to make the project fit in the maximum buildable area. That is something I question, if that is really necessary to create that courtyard, because that courtyard is affecting to the, to the neighbor as well. Another comment I have was the, from the front facade, we can see the, the roof of the garage. I would recommend the, the ridge of the garage can be changed, the orientation, so that it doesn't appear to be so dominant. And the height of the ridge can be lowered so that the window from the, the second floor can be revealed from the back, instead of like looking at like a major area of tile area, and we don't see a complete picture of the window behind and also the beautiful rock iron railing. So that's my two comments on the design.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu. Commissioner Cheng?
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Chu's comment. I, I basically felt that, that courtyard for a Spanish-type home should have, have some additional design to make it more part of the home. So I agree with that, and also the ridge line can be easily modified and make it a little bit better. Commissioner Salo's comment about the rough iron and all of that is critical to make this project successful. So I think with all that said, depending on how the rest of the commissioner feels, we can make it condition, and also the privacy issue, hearing the neighbor's concern on the east side and the south side, with the detail of the open railing. I, I think maybe we can have one continuance for the applicant to work out all this detail and come back so we can have a more complete design. I think would, would probably will benefit the project. So I, I can support a continuance with all this detail work.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the window detail, uh, we can see the front elevation with the render color, and then you see the window grid, uh, that is, uh, a pretty, pretty decently done. Uh, but the rest of the elevation, if you look at the drawing, it, um, it doesn't seem to have consistent window style with the, the window grid. And, um, if we look at the south elevation, um, we have like a window with, um, a partition that is, with a small piece of division on top, and then the big fixed panel at the bottom. So, I feel like, um, the rest of the elevation is to work out, uh, more thoroughly, uh, to be more consistent with the front elevation design. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Salo?
I don't have anything to add. Um, my only comment would be that, um, I would be comfortable approving the project today, but, um, you know, we can go to a vote, we'll see if we, see if we have the votes.
Okay, so let me try to summarize kind of some of the concerns and maybe, uh, look at staff to see if maybe they could work with the applicant to modify the project, to identify the concerns before this goes to final plan check, um, and put a little condition on everything. So, it seems that we are concerned, um, with the design of the courtyard, the height of the garage, uh, roof line to lower that. Uh, we want to have consistent window style, uh, and then we're concerned about the, the back balcony. Uh, we want some type of screening there. And, did I get all the points? Okay, so looking at Ron and Samantha, Ron, okay, just looking at Ron, is, is, do you think you can work with the applicant to finesse this with those?
Sorry. Oh, sure. The, the one thing though is the lowering of the garage roof. At first glance, I'm, I'm not sure how you would do that, than, than maybe make a portion of it as a flat roof. Well, looking at the roof, looking at the roof plan, I think it would maybe make the roof taller. I think I understand what you're saying. Uh, I think I, I think I understand. So, I'll look at it with them.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate, uh, that working with the city architect, we can look at the, uh, finesse the design of the courtyard, uh, looking at that garage roof line, so that's lowered a little bit, working, uh, making sure that there's consistent window style. Um, and then that the back balcony, that that has some screening with either plant material and/or solid wall on, instead of the railing. All right, so with that, if I can get a motion?
Chair, I guess the motion is to, um, approve the project, subject to applicant working with city architect to address those four issues.
Yes.
Okay, then let me go ahead and give it a try then. I move, I move to adopt a resolution for the Design Review Commission of the city of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number SPR twenty-two dash zero-one-one, excuse me, for a site plan review for a second story addition to an existing single-family residence located at one-one-oh-five O'Hamber Road, unit number B, subject to the recommended condition of approval. The added condition is to have the applicant, uh, work with city architect and planning staff to resolve the four additional concerns that was mentioned during deliberation. One is the roof line. Second is the detail of the courtyard on the Spanish home. Three is the privacy issue addressed and raised by the surrounding neighbors on the open balcony in the back. And the fourth one will be.
Window style.
The window style.
Consistency.
Consistency throughout the house. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Great, thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
The vote is four in favor. Motion passed.
And will someone get Commissioner Lopez? Welcome back, Commissioner. We hope your neighborhood is improved. Okay, uh, we go to our next item, three-two-seven East Broadway, planning case number PPD two-two-dash-zero-zero-eight, precise plan of design, applicant Eric Singh. Uh, presentation will be by senior planner Christine Song.
Thirteen residential condominiums at three-two-seven East Broadway. The project site is located on the north, north side of Broadway, uh, East Broadway, between St. Francis Street to the west and South California Street to the east, and the site is bordered by multifamily residences in all directions with the same zoning designations. Uh, the property is currently a vacant lot. The project site is zone R-three, multiple family residence, and has a general plan land use designation of high-density residential. Uh, this is an image of the proposed site plan. There are five separate structures that are proposed, uh, three of them containing three units each and two of them containing two units each. Uh, each unit will vary in size between fifteen sixty-seven to sixteen twenty-eight square feet, and all units will have a two-car garage on the ground floor. Uh, the proposed project complies with all of the R-three requirements for density, lot coverage, uh, building height, uh, the setbacks, parking, uh, and open space. The project is designed in a contemporary architectural style. Exterior finishes include stucco, wood siding, vinyl windows, cable railing, and steel sectional garage doors. The front entrance of each residential unit is accessed via pedestrian walkway from East Broadway, and the project will provide landscaping throughout the property and along the east and north property lines to offer screening and privacy to neighboring properties. Um, a total of twenty existing trees are proposed for removal, and a total of ten trees are proposed to be planted throughout the property, which include fruitless olive, sweet shade, and western red bud species. On August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission approved the proposed tentative track map number eight-three-nine-six-five for the proposed development with a four-to-zero vote. Um, and that would just ensure that each individual unit can be sold separately. The general plan, uh, land use designation for the site is high-density residential, which allows for multifamily residential development in the R-three zone, and the proposed project would meet housing goals two-point-one and two-point-two of the general plan. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, or SEQA. Technical studies relating to traffic, air quality, greenhouse gases, and noise were prepared by Michael Baker International, and the project was found to meet the conditions necessary for a Class thirty-two infill categorical exemption. The public notice, uh, was given in the following ways. Mail notices to all property owners and tenants within a five-hundred-foot radius. The notice was posted at the project site, as seen in the photo to the right. Um, agendas were posted at the city hall, post office, and the public library, and it was also advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Staff recommends that the Design Review Commission approve, um, planning case number PPD twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-eight at three-two-seven East Broadway to allow the development of a thirteen-unit condominium subdivision, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Um, at this time, it is for our commissioners to ask any clarifying questions from, uh, senior planner Song. Commissioner Two, do you have any clarifying questions?
Uh, no, I don't have questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
I guess if, if, um, staff can help me to understand, the, uh, the front yard, the, the rendering shows that it's, looks like it's a clear, um, glass railing, uh, under rendering. I don't know how true it is, if it is or not. I, I was not able to clarify that. Uh, if you cannot answer, I'll just ask the applicant, do you know?
I would ask the architect to clarify that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
One question. Did, did you say that, um, twenty tree, twenty trees were gonna take, uh, be taken down, replaced by ten?
Correct.
So we're losing a total of ten trees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
My only question is that, uh, the proposed project versus the development standards, it appears that we're over by sixty-six square feet. Um, and I wonder if that's an issue? Or is that something that, um, is negligible enough that we can disregard? Open space, regarding open space?
Oh, the, uh, open space, the R-three development standards requires a minimum of thirteen.
Okay, I've got it. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Anything else, Vice Chair?
Uh, no, no further comments.
My question is regarding, uh, the landscape plan, and then, um, on the landscape plan, it notes the trees that are to be removed, twenty trees to be removed, including nineteen oak. That nineteen refers to the diameter of the tree, of the oak tree, or nineteen oak trees?
Nineteen total count of oak trees.
There's nineteen oak trees. So, um, and then just to, to clarify on the oak trees, on the, the front, on A-one-point-oh, it shows the oak trees, uh, that are going to be removed, and it has, I believe it's the diameter of the oak trees. Um, one is, we start from the front, twenty inches, and it's my understanding that anything over nineteen is a landmark tree. Is that correct?
Um, I'm sorry, are you referring to state law or the city's, uh, tree preservation ordinance?
I think there is city, county, and state on this.
Uh, the proposed tree removals will be subject to a tree removal permit application, which, um, most likely will require an arborist report to be presented. Um, and so that application process comes after this entitlement process during plan check. So, if there are any trees that are deemed to be protected, uh, in place, that may adjust the project's scope.
Based upon that, um, so, the two that are in the lower front, one is twenty, one is twenty-four inch. But when we get to the rear of the property on that southern side, we have two forty-inch diameter oak trees. Um, there are several that are less, and there are two on the north side that are eighteen inches. So, I, I, I think oak trees are special, and when you get to something that's forty foot, I mean, forty inches in diameter, that's a lot of years to make that grow. Um, and I, I am concerned with that. I know you probably don't have the answer, and we don't have the landscape architect here, uh, from this, representing the city to kind of evaluate that. So, I'm going to just put that question out there. And then, um, I think that's all I have for, for staff. Any other comments for staff?
Um, yes, if I may. Um, you, you mentioned these are nineteen oak trees?
Yes.
Are they not protected in California?
They are protected. They're also considered protected under the city's tree preservation ordinance. Um, uh, like I mentioned previously, it would be subject to the tree removal permit application process, where the community development director would, at discretion, um, either approve the removal of those trees or, uh, require replacement trees in its place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
If I may have one more question for Christine.
Sure.
Is the oak tree removal part of the planning commission's review, or is it this commission? Do you know?
Uh, typically.
Has the project gone through planning commission already?
Right, um, I would say it would be part of this commission's review. Um, typically, when the tree removal is not tied to an entitlement that requires a public hearing, it does go through an administrative process with the community development director. But seeing as how the project is before you tonight, if the commission is inclined to place any conditions of approvals on the project regarding the trees, that would be acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then at this time with the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening. Um, thank you for your time tonight to, um, review this project. Uh, my name's Eric Sam. I'm the architect of this project. Um, as mentioned by staff, this project is a thirteen-unit condominium development. Um, the architectural, architectural style chosen is contemporary. The modern style is characterized by clean lines, geometric shapes, and relatively large fenestrations throughout the structure. The thirteen units are separated into five structures total, in an attempt to break up the linear visual massing. Um, the massing employs a stepping shape to further reduce the visual mass from the street view by having the first unit to be a two-story building. In regards to the material and color selection, the main use of material includes the natural wood siding, concrete-colored stucco, a slim-framed windows with outgates, and metal cable railing on the rooftop, uh, roof deck. Um, all of which are proposed to have earth tone colors, um, to create a, a natural, um, and warm tone that blends in with the surrounding. Open spaces are created with communal gardens and sitting areas to provide residents with a pleasant environment. Landscaping choice per landscape plan also enhances the project's curb appeal with two new street trees and two new trees in the front yard, all of those which will be planted at thirty-six-inch box in size. Um, on the practical side, we have ensured to have adequate number of parking space for the resident and guest personally in co-requignment. Um, and to answer Commissioner Chang's question about the front yard fencing, it is actually, uh, solid stucco. Um, on the rendering, I've made it half-tone, so it doesn't block the, the, um, the front of the building, so we can see the front of the building on the rendering. Um, and there is actually, uh, an arborist report that was prepared for this project, given that there's so many oak And there is actually an arborist report that was prepared for this project, given that there's so many oak trees on the site. I believe the site has been vacant for over maybe twenty, thirty years, and that gave the chance for the oak trees to grow on this vacant lot. But there was no gardener to take, take care of the oak trees, so the oak tree is not in a healthy shape, in a good shape. For us to develop this property, it is impossible to keep most of the oak trees. That's why our proposal is to remove all twenty, uh, twenty, total of twenty trees, which nineteen of them is oak tree, and replace as many trees as possible. And donors are okay with replacing oak trees, if that's one of the options that the commissioners would like to propose. But like I said, the, the oak trees are not in good shape. It's not symmetrical. Some of them have cavities per the arborist report. So that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions and take any suggestions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu? Do you have any clarifying questions for the applicant?
Yes, I, I have a question, because I mean, you look at the rendering, it looks pretty good. I think the designer had put a lot of thought for the materiality and the composition of the project. But you look at the elevation, it looks like a different project. I think a lot of, has to do with the window partition. Because it seems like on your rendering, you have a nice composition with small operable with a bigger fixed window by the side, but on your elevation, it turned into all sliders. And also, those skinny window on the rendering, it shows it's a fixed window, one simple panel, really contemporary looking. But on the elevation, it actually has division, and then it seems like it's like a slider up and down. So I was questioning about the operable idea about the windows. This is, the rendering doesn't really represent the project if the project is constructed with the elevation joint.
Yes, and the rendering is actually the first iteration that I proposed to the owner. After meeting with them, they're concerned about budgets, and the window size are the same. So on the rendering, we have casement windows and fixed windows, so there, you don't see any grids in the middle, in the middle. And also, we were able to have a larger fixed window alongside with a slim casement window for egress and for natural ventilation. And I agree to that it, it goes better with the contemporary style, but we also need to consider the budget that the donors have in, in mind for this project, for this development. But if, if, if the board thinks that it is critical to have those features, to have those fenestration details, I think that you can, you can condition it and change it back to what I have on the rendering.
I mean, in terms of design, when we're looking at the rendering, we are actually like approving the design with the, the presentation. So I think the project should be consistent in terms of the drawing and the, the presentation of the, of the project.
I understand, yeah. But the only, the only difference is just the type of, of, the, the operation of the, the windows itself.
Well, that's, that is the, the detail, right?
Yes.
The detail is devil, and, and that's how you made the project look like what you have envisioned in your drawing. And also, I have a question about the, the windows. You have shown the window in the material board that also has the grid on it. It doesn't, it's not consistent with your drawing or your rendering.
It is, it, it doesn't have a grid, but I'm just showing the material, so we can see the frame, the width of the frame, and also the color of the window and the material of the window. I just happened to find a, a picture without the grid.
Okay, so the picture is not like what you have selected. Is that right?
It, it is the same manufacturer, the model, and also the color and the material, just without the grids. Yes.
Yeah, the, the grid makes a lot of difference.
Yeah, but the, the window should, should look the same as shown on the elevation.
Okay, all right, thank you. Another, one last question is about the finishes. You have shown on the elevation, the, from the rendering, it looks like a darker, concrete-looking finishes. And from the material board is a textured stucco. Is that consistent?
You mean a gray color?
Yeah, the gray color.
Yes, so that, that is stucco finish. And on the elevation, I just used a slightly, like a darker ash to represent the difference between the white stucco and the gray stucco.
Okay, it seems like, it looks like a really different representation. That's one I want to clarify. By the way, is that a custom-made garage door?
The garage door, it is not. It is, it's from, straight from the manufacturer. Can order that.
So what a material is that?
It's a steel garage door.
Steel?
Steel.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And the, the second row of the panel is glass.
Okay, so the darker band is the glass. Well, there's a lot of budget on that, too.
But I mean, it's, it's very facial from the street, because we have a twenty-foot wide driveway.
Oh, so that's the, the one for the front unit?
No, for all of them.
For all of them? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Chang?
Thank you, Chair. Eric, the, I, I concur with some of the concerns that Commissioner Chu has. It is dangerous to, to send in drawings that are not consistent, meaning that the renderings show one thing. Your architecture elevations show another. I think eventually your, your contractor is gonna build per your construction documentation. And they bought the wrong window, or, or, or the window that reflected on your elevation. Planning staff eventually will go out there and approve your project, and then they find a major discrepancy between your rendering and your project. I served in the commission for many, many years, over twenty years, so I've seen projects fail. After they, they approved the project, they built the way that is convenient, but not following to the plan, to the teeth. Then we got problem. Then the project has to come back to the commission and become not a good thing for anybody. So I, I think it's, it's critical, as an architect, you have the obligation to make sure that that rendering should reflect what you're gonna build. And if it's not, because of co-issue, exit issue, the window operation issue for secondary exit, you need to work that out. In other words, where it's gonna be a casement window, it's gonna be a double hung window. But not having on what you have on page six, where you show a window that has three horizontal bars, and then the rendering doesn't have it, and then your architecture drawing, you have something completely different. You just have a casement window with different size and different look. Sooner or later, planning staff, when they go out there for a planning approval, it may be a big problem at that time. So your project is very attractive, and your rendering is beautiful, and I understand you try to show the landscaping and all of that. I, I, but I think, I think the consistency of these details become very important. Being, the plan being accurate is, is the architect's job to make sure it happens. Because once it got past your point, once the project got approved, you can't rely on the contractor out there to make it happen. They're gonna follow your plan or whatever, make it easy, they'll do it. So the, the end result will not be the same as you thought in the beginning. So with that said, maybe it makes sense for you to look at it carefully and then work out all the details. Overall, the project is very attractive. I, I have no problem working to, to, towards the approval, but I do have some concern as to the, the condition of the working drawing versus a rendering, design rendering. So there is enough discrepancy that you need some attention to take care of that.
I understand.
That's what I have, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Equating some of the concerns that my fellow commissioners have. I'd, I'm, I'm concerned about the discrepancy between plants and the, the rendering. The rendering looks very nice. But I am concerned about the discrepancies, and that is a glaring discrepancy. What other discrepancies we look copiously will find, I, I don't know. So I, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the trees as well. What type of trees you haven't said you're gonna be replacing the oaks with? You said, if I, if I answered correctly, you said it was possible that we requested oak that you would replace with oak. I, I don't think that's a, in my mind, I don't think that's a negotiable thing. Oak trees are very important, especially in California. But, so those are my concerns, and you're welcome to step in and ease the concerns.
Sure. Yeah, but like I, like I mentioned earlier, the oak trees are not in a good shape, existing oak trees. And it's, it's just not worth keeping it, I would say, because it's not careful there. It's been there for a long time. It's vacant. There's no one to trim it. There's no one to, to care for, for, for the trees. And also, there, there were an existing structure on site. It, it was burned down a long time ago. So this lot was not vacant, was not meant to be vacant for, for this long time. And I think it's, it's, it's good that we are proposing more units for the city. Trying to improve the, the neighborhood, because the vacant lot there is not, there's a lot of trash in there. This isn't, it's just not good for the neighborhood. And we have new landscaping that will go with the, the site plan layout of the new design. And which of those trees that we're proposing can, can also be replaced with oak trees. And after twenty years, they will have, they will be in a good mature size. And, yeah, and hope that is your concern.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yes, so I, I don't know how old these oak trees are. But what I'm hearing from you is that maybe you'll replace them with yearlings or something along those lines that may or may not survive the twenty-year span that you're stating. That is a concern to me. It, it's also, I understand you're trying to make the, the neighborhood beautiful. So are we. So our mission is dual, and we're here to try and come to some sort of consensus. I believe the oak trees are important also for the neighborhood as well, for a myriad of things. And they're, they're the reason why they're protected in California. And so I get what you're saying, that, that there's trash and all that. I would think as a property owner, if, I know you're, it's not you, but I would think as a property owner, you have an obligation to go and clean up whatever trash is within your, your, your confines or your property. So that is, that, that sort of statement is not a compulsory statement as to the, my being conducive to approving, especially a plan that I see, but I do not see reflected in the plan. I would, I would really like to, first of all, see that reflected, and then somehow some sort of plan, not if plan, but a plan for the oak trees.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair, Selah?
Yeah, I, I agree with all the commissioner comments that preceded. I do have a question on sheet A one point zero. I count the number of oak trees on that site plan as twelve that are within the property line and one that's outside the property line. But I think you mentioned that there were twenty, so are all twenty trees not represented on that site plan that are designated to be removed?
Yeah, so a lot of the oak trees are pretty small in size.
I see.
Yeah, so...
Are negligible?
Yes, so some of them like four, three inches, four inches, and probably like babies from the fake oak trees.
I understand. So of the twelve that you do have shown, I think only four of them are in the building area, and the remainder, the other eight are like on the perimeter or on the property line, not in anywhere that the building actually sits. I understand when you, when you grade the property, you know, you're gonna disturb the roots, and it's gonna be an issue if it's not done carefully. The tree's gonna die. But I wonder if there is some compromise that we can come to where we preserve the trees that are not existing where your building is being proposed? We do give up some of the trees so that the project can move forward. And in addition to that, I, I would like to see like an arborist report on what the condition of those trees are, so that we can determine, you know, accurately whether they're worth saving or not. Because maybe that arborist report makes this whole point moot. Maybe they're all ready to, ready to go. So those are my comments.
Okay, so we did have an arborist report, I believe, but I'm not sure if it's included in the package. But, yeah, there are some trees along the side yard setback area, and also around the driveway area, that potentially we can try to keep them. But as you said, with the grading and all the earthworks on, on, on this project, I think it's hard to keep them alive. But I'm happy to try. I mean, we can put on a plan. I, I'm not sure how this works, though. If we put on a plan to have the oak trees to remain, and during construction, it, they, they just died because of the other works that, that's done? Is that a responsibility to the owner, the contractor, of following the plan?
We might make it a condition of approval if, you know, the proposed design is to keep half or two-thirds of the trees, and in the process of construction they die, and they need to be replaced in kind or similarly?
I, I'm looking at the location of the forty, forty-inch diameter trees. They seem to be on the perimeter of the property. And if you were doing subterranean parking lot... And if you were doing subterranean parking lot, parking, then I would think the root damage might be significant. Oak trees can live hundreds of years. So it's not, I have an orange tree. My house was built in 1931. I think that orange tree was part of the original citrus growth. Fruit trees don't last that long. But oak trees, that's longevity. As I was preparing for this meeting and reading about the city's protective trees, I learned that the 50-foot Theodore cedar tree that I have in front of my house is a protected tree. And that's something, that tree is probably over 100 years old and will probably survive beyond my lifetime. So I, I don't want you to necessarily dismiss the oak tree issue, but I think because it is a special tree, that we have to look at that. In addition to that, there are some questions regarding the, the rendering versus the working drawings. So that makes it tough for us to say yes. One, at our meeting last month, I, we had as a condition that rooftop open space and wanting to see something that we, that there was an initial by the developers, some type of greening of that space. And when you look at the front unit, I think that's going to be something that imperative. Looking at that greening, having something to kind of soften that. Plants do that. It is open space and that's part of your requirement. And usually, open space has some greenery to it. There is significant amount of rooftop and I think you could help the environment and your project by doing a little bit of greening up there. I'm not going to talk too much more because we heard a lot of comments back and forth and some were kind of being repeated. So at this time, if, Ron? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one thing to add on the trees. I was the designer of the Ambassador Gardens in Pasadena. It's a huge estate with many historic trees. And we added 70 new condominiums. But we had to build, you know, within distance of these historic trees because the roots are about the same size as the canopy of the tree. We worked with our landscape architect and arborist and the city's urban forester. In some cases where we had a sidewalk, the sidewalk actually had to be a bridge so that nothing would bear down on the roots of, of the trees. So I'm, I am concerned if you, if you save some trees and you grade and pave over it and damage the roots, then they kill the tree.
Right, right, right. I, I'm not an, an arborist and I think having someone who can evaluate, I think Vice Chair Salo suggested that we have an arborist report on the, the trees because they would know a little bit more. And if we go back to the, the aerial view of the current lot, you can kind of see where the bigger oak trees are. There's, if you look at that corner, that's, that corner there, that's a 40 footer. I mean, 40, not 40 feet, a 40-inch diameter tree. Could that be saved?
Oh.
You know? But I think we need an arborist to tell us, you know, looking at California, the county law, San Gabriel law. I, I was just kind of looking over things really quickly and preparing for this meeting. And that 19-inch diameter is something that was coming up time and time again. So looking at those trees that are beyond that 19-inch diameter, what could be done? Maybe they can be saved, maybe not, yes?
Actually, I mean, having an arborist report for a project, for a site like this, I think is, is important. Having that arborist report and working with the landscape architect, there's only one sheet of the L1 plan and really kind of ignored what's out there. Just like a normal development. It probably should work with the arborist report. And if there are certain trees that can be salvaged or relocated or, or replanted, would, to respect what's out there. I think this will help the project to get approved. I, I think it's important for, for the architect to look at what's out there, understand the, how healthy these trees are based on the arborist report. If they are salvageable, we should salvage them. If they are not salvageable, at least on the report. And then your landscape architect should really respect what's out there and try to design your project accordingly. I think that will be responsible.
And I would like to clarify one thing. The 40-inch oak is actually off-site on the neighbor's property. So that one is not, is not gonna be removed?
Sure, Daniel.
Yeah.
It is now time, thank you. It's now time for a public comment. Has anyone filled out a speaker card?
No public comment.
So it is now 8:10. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. City staff, do you have any additional comments on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission. If it's acceptable to the project architect and applicant this evening to consider a continuance of the item, if an arborist report has been prepared for the project, it sounds like it is something that staff has to revisit with the city's landscape architect. And their firm does include arborists. So, staff along with the city landscape architect will review that more in detail to see how it relates to the site layout of the proposed project and whether it complies with the state regulations as well. The next meeting is October 23rd, I believe. So if it's susceptible to the applicant for the continuance, that is an option before the commission this evening.
And I would suggest, since there are some questions on discrepancies between the working drawings and the renderings, that those all be clarified when you come back in October because that's gonna be something that we're gonna want to see after our comments. And I would also add, looking to, to see on that, at least on that front unit, that you have some type of greenery on that front unit. Kind of green it, green it up, green up your, your, your part and your development. And looking at minimal greening on the subsequent units. The last comment I do want to say is, in the landscape plan, you do have, it shows them here as trees. It is the, you have 15 fern pines. The spacing of those, those could also be hedge, hedges. And when you look at the spacing, it looks like those are gonna be more like hedges than, than trees, since they're all kind of lined up along that one section there. And it helps, but oak trees are very special. So, thank you. I think we should have a vote for the continuance, right? So if there's a motion to continue this item to our next meeting in October, on October 23rd? If I can get that motion on the second and then we'll do a roll call.
Chair, I shall move.
Thank you. Second?
I second. But may I add, just that as soon as the arborist report becomes available, if we can have it distributed to the members of the commissioner? Because the longer, the longer we, we have to see it, in my view, is the better. The more time we have to review the arborist report. And, and will staff, will the city, the city staff be acquiring the, the arborist? Or will that be up to the developer to, to get the report? Who's gonna hire the arborist?
The, the.
That wasn't clear to me. Somehow I missed it, but yes, I, I would like to see that.
The development team will hire their own arborist to prepare a report, which will be reviewed by the city's landscape architect. And their firm includes arborists and licensed landscape.
Very good, thank you.
And could we have a landscape architect at our next meeting? When we, or when we have discussed this item?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the second. But.
That was the second. So a roll call?
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, continuance.
Commissioner Shig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Five in favor of a continuance, motion passed.
Okay. And we're on to Item D, which is 109 South Delmar Avenue, Planning Case Number PPD 22004, Precise Plan of Design, applicant Matthew Clemente of Greenberg Duro. And Sam, twice tonight.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The project site is located at 109 South Delmar Avenue. And this is a precise plan of design application. The, the site is located at the southwest corner of West Last Tunis Drive and South Delmar Avenue. And this is currently a vacant property. The property is approximately 14,400 square feet, which is about .33 acres in size. And the site is zoned C1 for retail commercial and has a general plan designation of general commercial. As shown on the slide, the site to the north, south, east and west are also C1 properties. To the south is high-density residential. This site was previously developed with a citizens' business bank that was demolished in 2015. The proposed construction, the project before the Design Review Commission this evening is the design of the project. A drive-through use is a permitted use on the site, so there is no additional entitlements that's required for this proposed use. It is an allowed use by code. And what is proposed is a one-story, approximately 900 and just short of 1,000 square foot building with drive aisles that will circulate around the building, around the south, east and north of the project site. The, the drive-through will include two drive-through aisles. Parking will be provided to the west of the building. There will be a service window on the north elevation for pickup after the order and then also for a walk-up window on the south elevation. And the driveway is proposed approximately around the existing location of the current driveway off of West Last Tunis Drive. And as part of Public Works Review, the turn requirements will be a right out and a right in to the property site only. In addition to the turns on the property, the Public Works Department has also reviewed the right-of-way improvements as well as required traffic signage and striping for the, for the site. The proposed architectural style is contemporary. What's proposed for the exterior is a sand finish cement plaster in two shades of gray. There would be a wood canopy structure that will be painted black and vertical wood cladding panels that will be in a dark brown. And the storefront will include anodized dark bronze with clear insulated glass windows. Staff as well as the city architect has reviewed the proposed design. Per the city's architectural commercial design guidelines and the city architect, as well as staff believes that the building is appropriately designed as, and is in context with the building designs that are currently seen on West Last Tunis Drive as well as South Delmar Avenue. The table here shows that the project does comply with the city's codes. It's at 7% floor area ratio of the project site. When 70% is the maximum that's allowed. Building heights are allowed up to five stories. And again, the site is at one story. The project does comply with setback requirements and also meets the parking requirements as well with 10 onsite parking spaces. This is the proposed landscaping plan. A more detailed plan has been provided to the design commission. But it does show that the existing landscaping that's located along the perimeter of the properties where possible will be preserved. It's mentioned in the report that there are 10 existing jacaranda trees. Five are located along the perimeters and are proposed to be protected in place. There's five additional ones that are currently existing where the two drive aisles are proposed. And those are to be removed. As part of the evaluation, it did identify one of the trees as a landmark tree. But that tree is one of the five that's being preserved. And again, a tree removal permit will be required and is subject to the review and approval of the community development director. But additionally, the landscape plan will be reviewed by the city's landscape architect as well to make sure that it does comply with those requirements. In addition to the new building, landscaping signage is also a part of this project. There will be a freestanding pole sign that's proposed at the northeast corner of the project site as well as wall signs and wayfinding signs. The project is consistent with the goals of the general plan, including economic development goals as well as community design goals. This project was reviewed for compliance with the Environmental Quality Act. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for public review, made available between August 2nd and September 4th. Comments were received and responses to those comments as well as a mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared and has been provided for public review. And this project was noticed to the public within a 500 radius, mailing both to property owners as well as occupants posted at the project site, published in the San Gabriel Sun. And again, the agenda was posted at City Hall, the post office, library and city website. So the recommendation before the Design Review Commission this evening is to approve Planning Case Number PPD 22-004 for a new drive-through coffee shop. And it also includes a walk-up window and no indoor seating. And this is at 109 South Delmar Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And this concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. At this time, it's for the commission members to ask staff any clarifying questions. So we'll start with Commissioner Two.
No, I don't have question for staff, thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
No question, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Salo? I'm two, Vice Chair, Salo?
No, no questions for staff, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions for staff, but I'll have some questions for the applicant. So at this time, would the applicant please come forward?
So at this time, would the applicant please come forward? Hi. Do you have anything to add to the presentation before we start asking questions?
No, at this time, I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to thank staff and also ladies and gentlemen of the commission, city architect, and also our consultant, environmental consultant, Placeworks. This project started back in November of 2021. Of course, we were really appreciative of their audience and their guidance getting this project to this state. The site was not without its challenges, especially in consideration of specifically the lot size and also just the general context of siding the building and getting the appropriate site circulation and just complying with all the development standards. So that's all at this point. I could turn it over to you guys, thank you.
And I just want, I will ask you, Ron, at the end, because I forgot to ask you if you had any comments. So I want to dish you, but we'll do the commissioner comments and we'll go back to you. So Commissioner Tu.
Yes, I have a question for applicant. Also, I think there's a solar panel required for the new construction, but I don't see on the drawing.
Yeah, so one thing I wanted to clarify is that we don't have working drawings to date. Everything has been based off schematic plans. Of course, this project is still in what we like to call an at-risk submittal stage. So at this point, we are mostly tasked with securing the land use entitlements and the development grant before we develop working drawings for construction documents, submittal for a permit. So at this time, and as the exhibits reflect, there are solar panels shown. We do not have a solar panel inventory prepared to date. Again, this is mostly used as visual study, should there be solar panels provided. And at the least, we intend to, at least in compliance with California green energy codes and the like.
Yeah, the reason I ask is as far as I know, Starbucks might have their own solar requirement that would occupy beyond the roof's area. So that would trigger a design to accommodate a solar panel, potentially. I don't know what is your agreement with Starbucks. So that's just to my knowledge. Sometimes they even add like a freestanding canopy and accommodate a solar panel.
Yes, that's correct. And in some instances, we've provided solar panels over the trash enclosure. We've had considerable projects in the city of Los Angeles, which has more, I would say, at times, stringent requirements for solar readiness. In this instance, there's, the store has not been outlined to be a solar program store. But of course, for the purposes of these design exhibits that we're presenting tonight, we wanted to make sure that solar was, at least accommodations for solar, can already be studied and evaluated for visual reference.
Right, right. I just want to make sure there's, it wouldn't have like a substantial change to the appearance, the look of the building because of the solar panel.
As far as the projections beyond the canopy as shown, that's typical of most Starbucks prototypes that we present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cheng.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. I guess the signage is part of this approval. And I just want to make sure that the, we only have the Starbucks logo per rendering. So the rendering shows the logo only. It doesn't have the Starbucks coffee on the rendering. Is that the intention? I see drive-through and the Starbucks logo. Is that the intended submission that you want?
At this point, this schematic reflects the intent of the signage. Unfortunately, they're not here, and it's under a separate application, superior signage. This was provided to us, and this does reflect the most current signage standards, from my understanding, correct.
I guess we will have to approve what's in front of us. So in other words, if just a logo and drive-through, and that's what we have in front of us.
Correct.
So if I may ask one more thing, what is the operating hours of the establishment?
The operating hours? I'd have to clarify, I do have Starbucks representation here, Jennifer Green with Starbucks Store Development Manager. However, it's standard for us to go in from 4:00 AM to midnight.
It starts at 4:00 AM?
Correct.
I see. The reason why I ask, because it kind of tied into the signage. It's a lighter sign, and I guess it's good to note and on the record. So it started at 4:00 to about?
Midnight.
Oh, 4:00 to midnight.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a lot of time to drink coffee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
No, but if we need to, maybe we may do a second round or something. But as I permeate myself with.
Vice Chair Salo.
Well, typically, you know, we'd like to see construction drawings and material boards and much further developed project than what's being presented here. However, this applicant is unique from the others in that I feel like I've been to this building before. You know, I'm pretty sure I've been to five buildings that look just like this. So I have a strong sense of what the building's going to look like, and I have faith that it's going to be consistent in the construction. I would say that the materials have been identified in the report with the paint colors and all of that. So I think a materials board would have been easy to put together, to go with the rendering that's being presented. But with that being said, you know, some, this site is, oh, thank you. This site at this corner, I think, is appropriate for what's being proposed here by the applicant. That's one of my comments.
If I may clarify, Commissioners Salo, we did provide a material board formatted for, it's not a true material board, but it is a letter-size attachment, which does detail the finishes and the like. So just wanted to double-check that you're in possession of that. Thank you.
I do have a couple of comments. In preparation for this meeting, I did go to Starbucks. One that was just like this, the one on San Gabriel on Foothill, the exterior treatment was different, but basically it was no inside dining, a walk-up window, and drive-through. Being a San Gabriel resident for over 30 years, I would like to just state that there was a bank here. So there was a tremendous amount of surface parking, and the bank building was not cornered. It was basically, it was not pedestrian-friendly. So that being the case, I normally wouldn't support drive-throughs or driveways, but looking at what was there before, knowing the corner, seeing the design, I think that it is an appropriate use. But we're not talking about the use, we're talking about the design. So with that, looking at a pedestrian scale, what could be done for pedestrians? I see on Los Tunas Drive, you do have that pedestrian walkway that is kind of midpoint there that goes around the west side of the building, turning over to the walk-up window for pedestrians that's on the south. I don't see that on the Delmar side. And as there was shown, the R2 is to the south. So it's very probable that you will have people from south of this project walking. So looking at that, I'd like to suggest that you have, on the southern part, a walkway that leads people into that walk-up window some way, somehow. And that would basically redo some of your plant materials on the south and medium. So you have your width for your two lanes. And I think that's important when we look at In-N-Out, where they have their queuing lines going beyond the block. And there is a bank with the driveway right next door. And we also, there is an example of a car wash on Colorado Boulevard and Sierra Madre, where the cars queue up and flock the bus stop and all of these driveways. And so I do think your two driveways, that two lane is a good solution for the site. But I do think that the pedestrians coming from the south, that needs to be addressed. And then looking at your signage plan, there's nothing, there was nothing at the Starbucks in Pasadena, in East Pasadena. That said, walk-up window. Now, you have all of this wayfinding signage for cars, but a simple sign saying walk-up window to identify that window as being the appropriate place for someone to order something, I think will, it will help, especially since most of the frontage of the pedestrian and vehicular, you're going to have that on Los Tunas Drive and on Delmar. And this is kind of tucked under, tucked away in that southwest corner of the building. So I suggest that you add a walk-up window to your signage program. Those are my main comments on this project. I think I want to hear from Ron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there's been, in CNN Business this past week and widely reported in a lot of other outlets that focused on McDonald's, McDonald's 2032 Plan. And the 2032 Plan is to eliminate or greatly reduce dining rooms. The square footage is going to reduce. And then there were accompanying articles on Taco Bell, Starbucks, and Chipotle, all saying the same thing. And it said with Taco Bell's, they're going to start doing the double drive-through. So this has become more and more common, right? But as far as this project, I thought it was well-presented. It has a combination of vertical elements, like a low one-story building and a tall one-story building, and then combinations of horizontals and verticals. And so I thought the combination of all of this was a nice composition. And the colors reinforced all of that. So I was pretty happy with the presentation.
Thank you, Ron. Sorry about that. Do we have, it's time for public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We have one speaker card from local resident Andrew.
Good evening, commission. I see a couple of issues with this design. I think it's a terrible design. You did mention the East Pasadena Starbucks. Typically, the line is wrapped around the block, through the red light, and all the way in the front, bottleneck, right? And I see it happening here. You have, you're going to be a bottleneck as you go in. So people are going to road rage right there, right where they converge. And I could imagine the police are going to be called there often. But as people leave, you're blocking the exit. And Los Tunas on a, you know, afternoon, is a busy street. You have the bus stop there. People aren't going to be able to exit as they would like to. And then you have, now you have cars trying to get out of the drive-through. So that's a bottleneck right there. And also, it's not pedestrian-friendly in any way. I'd like to point out the handicap at the southwest corner. There's a handicap parking. That person is going to have to go through the traffic that's coming in and out. I guarantee you, there'll be a bottleneck outside the double entrance. When you're in a wheelchair, it's, you're not, you're not very visible. You're down low. So that's going to create a problem. Not only a problem for the handicap person, but a problem for the business owner and the city for approving a project that is creating a hazard like this. The same way with the pedestrian entrance. You're going in front of the drive-through window. And, you know, when you're, when you're driving through a Starbucks, there's a lot of people just rear-end the guy in front of them because they're not paying attention. You know, you're typically not in park, you're on the brakes, right? So that's another issue that I see right there. As I said, the double bottleneck. And, you know, this should be pedestrian-friendly because just south of that, on my vote, it's just a bunch of apartments on Broadway, all apartments. Those people are going to want to walk to the Starbucks. They're not going to drive their car a block to go to Starbucks. There's, I have family that, family and friends, that during their college years, they worked for Starbucks as baristas and also up to management. This is not in any way pedestrian-friendly because even at the walk-up window, there's really no seating there. So if you get a few people in, then everybody's just going to be standing there, as opposed to being able to sit down and wait for the order to come. And you're the representative of Starbucks? In Glendora, there is a Starbucks that has a similar footprint to this. It's on Route 66 and Santa Fe Avenue in the city of Glendora. What they have is, their thing would be similar to this footprint, but the entrance to it would be, on this one, it would be coming in from Delmar. And they just circle around right there where all the cars are converged, and they leave. Come in, they order, they circle around and leave. The pedestrians all are able to access the front. So they have no, there are no contact with the cars for the pedestrians. So in this plot, they could be parked here and walk to the front and not have to worry about the cars right there. And like I said, Los Tunas, you're right next to the bus stop. You're creating a hazard. There's a pedestrian hazard, and that needs to be addressed because that's lives, right? That's injuries. Thank you. No, I'm fine. So like I said, if you look at the plan, at the one in Glendora, I think that's a great plan. That would fit here because the entrance would be in Delmar. You're not blocking the, Los Tunas traffic is terrible in the afternoon. It's always been, it always will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any more comments?
No, Madam Chair.
It is now 8:41. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. Would city staff like to add anything?
No comments from staff unless there's any comments from the project architect.
Thank you again, and I wanted to thank the previous gentleman, I didn't catch his name, for bringing up those concerns. So just to do my best to qualify some of those concerns and quell some of it, knowing that we've studied this site intensively. Yes, I think that's one of the greatest challenges, especially given a drive-through site on a corner of this size. I think there's a lot of interest balancing between not just preserving the pedestrian element, but also just by very nature, the use of a drive-through use. I think with that said, in our many iterations that we brought before, the city, community development, the city architect, and also our consultants, all project partners involved, including the client, it was important to not only address those to the best of our concern, but I do truly believe that the site plan as presented does reflect that. Specifically touching first on the issue of ADA accessibility, that singular access and path of travel is the shortest distance, being the most direct and closest means of accessing the site for both van-accessible ADA stall right there, in addition to the ADA. in addition to the ADA stall right in front of the walk-up window. That wasn't without consideration. Same, the provision of the double drive-through was directly in response to empirical data that we've collected through traffic counts and the like. So given that we, right now, it accommodates close to, let's say, on any given day, a 12 to 13-car stack, that's well-accommodating of the overflow stacking that we've seen at other stores in the region. And we wanted to accommodate that to the best of our ability. So our responsibility as architects is, for the most part, to serve the public and the end user. So with that said, safety is always a paramount concern, especially when we're bringing a use that sometimes is viewed as a little bit sensitive and controversial at times. So with that said, I just want to do our best to try to address some of those concerns for, for the public and for the board. So, thank you again.
Do you think there's flexibility to put signage on the walk-up window, for the walk-up window?
I do believe that the client is amenable to those terms. Of course, we don't have that signage package, or we're not able to amend that right now and present those documents to you. But I think that is a reasonable condition to add wayfinding and accessory signage to better direct to the walk-up window, correct?
And do you think it'll be possible to add southern entrance for pedestrians?
My only concern with that item, and we have evaluated that, is that it would, it would have to be on the premise that we're maintaining some kind of cross-access with the neighboring commercial user. So with that said, I mean, to try to best preserve a path of travel that could be accessible from Del Mar Avenue, I think, I mean, we're looking at a very limited eastern frontage, especially once you start negotiating clearances, pathway clearances and cutting through that landscape. But I do believe that the eastern orientation facing Del Mar would probably be, if we were able to provide it and it meets all codes, that would probably be the best location for citing that pedestrian connectivity.
I do think having a path of travel is important. When you look at the adjacencies across the street, you have a Bank of America that has a lot of people going in and out. And just south of the Bank of America is the U.S. Post Office. That is used all the time. So that's directly across the street. On this, it is, I'm not within the 500-foot radius of this project, but I do walk this area on a regular basis. And I think that there is a good amount of foot traffic, both on Las Tunas and on Del Mar, to warrant pedestrian entries on both sides.
Yeah, so, thank you again. In consideration that, and taking upon Starbucks real estate representation, I, the biggest concern with allowing for that provision for cross-access is always could be contingent on the neighboring property owner. And of course, as much as we would like to commit to that kind of feature, we can't speak for their willingness to, you know, sign on an agreement for cross-access in that manner. Or, and then there's also some safety concerns, which also would be, you know, both unpredictable, and we can't speak to that, especially if pedestrian behavior is going to be accessing from exactly that a neighboring commercial user. So that would be the only thing I could bring up.
In walking around different places, what I find is that people will take the path of least resistance, and they will go across your planting materials that you have there. They will cut across cars. They're going to find a way to walk from the south. It's going to be harder for them to walk from the south all the way to Del Mar. That is, to me, that's, that's a big concern, to offer something. And I think the other thing you have to look at is, when you look at just the demographics, north of Las Tunas, you have a wealthier person. South of Las Tunas, they're not as wealthy. The homes are less expensive, and it's more of R2, R3 zoning. So you're not looking at homeowners. And, you know, we need to do something to treat people with equity. And I think doing something with another pedestrian access point on that south portion will, will be something that you can say, "All are welcome." It's not, "You have to enter from the north side." But all are welcome to Starbucks.
No, I understand that, Madam Chair. My only hesitancy is just speaking on a component that is just contingent on another private party, and I'm unable to speak to that, so, for that.
Safety comes first, but I know you have some great engineers and great architects, and this is not your first rodeo. You, your company has done this time and time again, since their early days in Seattle. So you know how to do, you can accomplish this. So with that, I'd like to see if there's any other comments from commissioners.
Yeah, it seems to me that if the pedestrian needs to assess the project from the south side, it seems it would be like a major overhaul for the overall layout, the site layout of the, of the project. Because if the pedestrian is approaching the site, crossing those aisle, those driveways, it's not a really friendly and reasonable way of approaching the building. That's my concern, of having pedestrian access from that side without having to change the site layout. That's my, my comments.
I think having a wayfinding signage for the pedestrian walk-up window is something very easily can be done. And I'm sure they can go to the corporate wayfinding system, find something that'll make it appropriate for that. So that, I would definitely support that idea over and above the staff report. But try to force another entrance, though, south side may be challenging. Maybe, while you're doing that, maybe a signage of some kind. So people, if they are approaching the south side, if they can see a wayfinding system, to know how to get to the walk-up window from that, from that side of Del Mar, it will help also. That may give us some guidance, how to get there, rather than force it through the traffic path. So I would, I would recommend the architect and the corporate side to look at that possibility of guiding potential customers from the south side or Del Mar side to safely walk up to the window. That would be, I can support that idea.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'd like to go back to the trees. I heard staff mention that one of the trees was not going to be removed because it was protected, is that my understanding?
Five will be protected in place.
Okay. So it will not be removed?
Five will be protected in place and five will be removed because they're located in the area of the double drive aisles. But the one that has been identified as a landmark tree is one of the ones that will be protected.
Oh, okay. That was my question. We're talking about the south side, about the entrance, pedestrian entrances. Are we talking about the going in from Del Mar directly into the property? Or are we from the adjacent property to the south of Del Mar? Yeah, that would be nice to see, just for safety reasons, for the convenience of the people that live in the south, which predominantly is going to be the main clientele walking through the place, as opposed to the northern side of San Gabriel. Well, yeah, no, it'd be a combination, but, you know, just the population density.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what my reference is. That was it, thank you.
Vice Chair, Salo?
So I agree with Chair's comments about Bank of America, Chase Bank, and the post office being adjacent to the property. And those properties have ample parking and a lot of traffic. So I think the Starbucks is going to get more pedestrian traffic than anticipated because people are going to park there when it's backed up with cars and just walk here a hundred feet. But I do think that, you know, the layout looks as efficient as you can make it for a tight site. I think the pedestrian access from Del Mar should probably, it could be a little more substantial. I do have a question, why the ADA parking is split? Is there a reason for that?
That it's what, I'm sorry?
The two ADA parking spaces?
Yes.
Are split, and I think the speaker had mentioned that, you know...
Oh, well, one is van-accessible, which has wider dimensions. So this was just our ability to get proper fitment and maintain those clearances.
Okay, but they could not both be on this side of the drive aisle?
No, because it would have to be access for the passenger side.
Okay.
So that's why they both load from the passenger side?
Thank you. Mr. Chu just kind of asked me how, what I envision. So I'm going to just kind of stand up here to kind of show you. So you take this, like I said earlier, looking at your landscaping, because we do want to protect people from the vehicles, so you come here. This becomes a walkway, this way, to your window, to over here. So you will minimize the interaction with cars that you come here with your landscape plan.
Yeah.
For people who need a three feet.
Yeah.
From three feet, to, you look at this corner, and just that would be your walk, walking out.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be a walking, walking, just that would be your walk to that, to that walk-up window. And there's no cars, people would take a shortcut. But if there are cars, that's a safe route. That's for my husband, the former UBS driver, he only lets me walk on designated walkways. So you can designate that as a walkway. And some people, i.e. my husband and others, you know, you provide that safe travel lane. But I think it's up to the commissioners. We've heard different points of view on this, and we could vote. I'm not an architect, but we have architects here on the commission who would not.
If I may, and only because I want to clarify this to you, I don't think that's at all a bad proposal, but my only concern is that, at that point, and I guess my question is poised to city staff at this point, would that be requiring further action or relief because we're landscape buffering requirements? We would, at that point, be, I guess, doing away with some of those design provisions that we've accommodated on plan? I think it's the issue of the landscape buffering. At that point, because we're providing an access route, we would be deviating from those standards, correct?
Yeah, so if it's acceptable to the development team, as well as to the Design Review Commission, what was pointed out, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair. The recommendation, if the commission is acceptable to it, is to evaluate pedestrian access off of Del Mar Avenue, potentially to evaluate designing and providing a walkway that follows the landscape planter along the south property line, leading to the hash area that provides access to the walk-up window. That is something that we can evaluate to see if it's done in a way where a walkway can be incorporated with the landscaping, so that there's dual function. And it's designed in a way where it's landscaped appropriately with the walkway, and we can walk, work with the city architect, as well as the city's landscape architect, on whatever that may look like. But then also to make sure that the Public Works Department also, and Building and Safety, gets a chance to take a look at all the safety elements that would be associated with that as well. So it would be an evaluation of providing that access along the south property line.
So if the commissioners, I'm not saying it's going to happen, because we've heard different points of views here tonight. But if you want to move forward, you could be moving forward on conditions as per some of the other projects we've brought out tonight. So I'm going to let my fellow commissioners talk about it and see how they feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chang, I see your lights on.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a good option to let the applicant have to explore the possibility, personally staff's recommendation, if they were able to work with the landscape requirement and landscape architect and create a secondary pedestrian entrance safely. And then I think that would be a good option. So I can support that idea. It's not part of the requirement, but I think we're given the option to work with city staff to make that happen. The signage for the walk-up window is, would be a condition of approval. I can support that.
So I think that is a motion for order on our Del Mar Avenue, planning manager, number BPD22, so that's a report that wants to...
Sure, that would be fine. Yeah, that's my motion. Thank you.
One condition on the sign of the walk-up window, and then the second is to work with staff to explore the option of a secondary pedestrian entry point that moves people safely to the walk-up window.
Correct. That would be my motion. Thank you, Chair.
This is a team effort. Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Salo?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor. Motion passed.
Thank you so much. That takes us to item number four, comments from the planning manager.
No comments this evening.
So then we go to item number five.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Just a quick mention of dumplings and beers, which is, will be...
Just a quick mention of dumplings and beers, which is, will, will be October 6th, Friday, so that's coming up, even if not to visit the beer garden, the food trucks, and, and all of the other, I guess, eateries are, are available, again, featuring dumplings as the theme and the beer garden. I, I think this is to coincide, this is Sangue Bro's take on the Oktoberfest. That's it.
Buy a ticket.
It, the, the beer and dumpling festival is, is a good event, and lots of people coming from all over the place, and lots of people walking to the event, too. Lots of people walk there. Um, so we go to item number five, Commissioner comments and conference meeting reports. Commissioner Chu?
Uh, no, I don't have reports. Thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
No, I do not have any additional.
Commissioner Lopez?
I do not.
Vice Chair, Salo?
Um, very briefly, my office received a memo from the County of Los Angeles regarding like an uptake, uptick in cases of psilocosis in young men. We're working on construction sites, breathing in the dust powder from marble and dust grinding, and they're saying, you know, some 35-year-old men have like the lung capacity of 75-year-olds. So it's, it's a new issue that's kind of coming up with all the construction we're doing, just another, another thing, another thing to be mindful of, along with the things we have to be mindful of always, yeah.
I think, if I may, on Agostino Road and the, on the back end towards the railroad tracks, there are several places, several shops there, that work with that type of material, potentially an environmental hazard for everybody there and the communities further south.
I have no additional comments. With that, the meeting of, of the Design Review Commission is adjourned to the next regular meeting, which will be on Monday, October 23rd, 2023, at 6:30 PM at City Hall, 425 South Mission Drive, second floor.